Thank you, everyone, for coming. This is the Task Force to Reimagine Policing in Brookline Subcommittee on the Walk and Talk Program Public Hearing. Anne or Kim, could you put the link to the report? Actually, I could do that in the chat.
I'll do it.
Okay, great. So I'm going to give a really, really brief run through of history, our findings, and our recommendations. Hopefully, you all have read our report. And we look forward to hearing your feedback. So the Walk and Talk Program was started in 1992 by then Lieutenant Daniel O'Leary, Detective Mark Morgan, Chief Sumard, and Brian Clunin, who was Executive Director of the BHA at the time. And I believe Matthew Baroness was also involved. It was the beginning of a shift toward a new community policing strategy in Brookline. The Subcommittee struggled a bit to piece together the whole picture of the program's origins, objectives, guidelines, and measurable benefits. There's a whole lot of information in the report around that and on the Police Department website from their perspective. The gist is that, in the beginning, there were many BHA residents cycling in and out of the criminal justice system. And this program was meant to be a way to diffuse and divert the situation. It's also been said many times that the Walk and Talk Program is a way to build bridges and relationships with BHA residents so that the interactions with police are not always bad ones. So the residents feel comfortable alerting officers to potential problems, and officers can be available to follow up with residents that have had issues previously. The BPD states on their website that this is achieved by having a highly visible presence on BHA properties, doing program with kids, including a youth basketball league, cooking holiday dinners for residents. They have made themselves available to residents at all hours in case of emergency, and many other things that are social services in nature. And they are well-liked by those that know about the program and those who use its services. But in our interviews and conversations with Black BHA residents and a former resident, we have learned that the program is also seen as a detriment. When police are placed in a community with the goal of being highly visible, in part with the expressed goal of inviting information from residents about possible problems in the community, it's understandable that anxiety develops. Some residents have reported feeling policed in their own homes. It's also notable to consider that no other neighborhoods in Brookline receive this high level of attention from the police. Due to the historical violence and oppression of Black, Brown, and poor people by police, it has been reported that police officers can trigger anxiety in those communities and an impulse to avoid interaction with officers or act in a way that won't draw attention. This is not necessarily due to a particular officer's actions, but rather to a person's understanding of and experience with the institution of policing in the United States. When considering how to weigh the information we have received from residents about their experiences with the program, we cannot use a majority-wins measurement. The individuals that are expressing discomfort in their home with the program are in the minority, but their experiences are not less important than those that are pleased with the program in the majority. While their numbers may be smaller than those in favor of the program, almost every person we spoke with about the program that disliked it was Black. The Walk and Talk Program is a part of a public safety strategy. Therefore, if some of the community feels unsafe because of the program itself, then the strategy is not providing public safety. We need to pay particular attention when the people who feel uncomfortable or unsafe are Black and Brown residents whose population make up a small minority in Brookline. When those voices are drowned out, we uphold racist systems. So our findings are based not on whether or not the individual officers themselves are liked or not. We are examining the system and the environment it creates. So our findings are based on the question, are police officers the best or even the most logical professionals suited to be providing social services and building personal relationships in a multiracial housing authority community? And our answer is no. Police officers doing this work is a conflict of interest. And so our recommendations are to, one, to commit to continue long-term these community conversations that we have been doing. Our work does not end with this report. This is only the beginning. The conversations now need to shift from the subject of the Walk and Talk Program to beginning to understand the challenges residents are experiencing, the opportunities already present, and the stakeholders that need to be centered in the conversation in order to envision new solutions and systems together. Secondly, using significant community input that we will gather in these conversations, we will develop the best way forward to improve our system of public safety for all residents. After this input is gathered, the Walk and Talk Program will be either disbanded and replaced by another system or may be slowly phased out as other services and supports are developed alongside the Walk and Talk Program. And third, we would like an effective, comprehensive, and easily accessible website that provides access to available social services and other resources and centralizes the community's advocacy and visioning work around public safety so that there is a clear understanding of the resources available to residents without needing to go through a police officer. So this envisioning of the way forward is also laid out in detail in our Community Engagement Report, which we'll be having a hearing later this evening. So that's all I have, and I look forward to hearing feedback from all of you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bonnie. Folks who are in the attendee list, we do have 22 community members with us this morning. You can use the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate that you would like to make a public comment, and then I will promote you, and your time will begin. So the first person signed up for public comment is Janelle Ambrose. Janelle, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable, and your time will begin.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name's Janelle Ambrose, and I live at High Street Veterans. I don't really know how to start. I just, I really feel like, I really feel like a lot of our problem is actually, it is actually has to do with housing policies. And I say that because it doesn't make sense that if any other community member has police involvement, the police don't notify your landlord. I mean, they just simply don't have time for that. So it just is bizarre, to say the least, that they would make time to report police involvement by a resident to BHA. And it's really interesting to now find out that the $15,000 is a grant and isn't even coming out of BHA. It's actually taxpayer-funded grant money, which means that we're paying for that. And so that's just the first interesting thing, you know? The other thing is that other housing authorities across the country have a budget for security and whatnot, but they end up with armor who sit in their cars and text their girlfriends while drugs and gangs and guns run rampant, while people are shot right through their walls with armor, security. And I'm just curious, has anyone ever thought about how much something like that would cost and how impersonal and horrible something like that would be? I certainly wouldn't want my taxpayer grant money to go to something like that. And so the fact is, if they didn't get the $15,000, they still would come over here. They still would like have, you know, it's in their contract, you know? Just because we're the projects doesn't mean that it's a paper cutout and that they just, you know, if they didn't get the $15,000, that they wouldn't patrol, they wouldn't keep us safe, they wouldn't do all the things that they already do. So that $15,000 is just really bizarre in so many ways to me because now, you know, it's like, that's a grant. That's a grant. So what can I, I mean, can we see the proposal that was written to receive the grant? Can we start there? And also, can we remember that if it weren't for BHA policies, right? You know, we wouldn't have the situation where we felt policed in our homes because if the police had to come there for any reason, that would be our personal business, just like it would be Bonnie's, you know, just like it would be any other Brookline resident. But because you live in the projects, now if you have police involvement, now it's your landlord's business. And the problem with that is if they have a zero tolerance for domestic violence, which is creepy and weird, it's like, you're not allowed to be a victim, not even one time, or you're evicted. And so basically, if you're a victim of domestic violence, you're certainly going to hide it and keep it stashed away like the best you can. Imagine children afraid to tell someone that their stepdad is abusing them because their mom has said, "I know it's awful, but we don't want to be homeless because that's worse." So that's not a problem with the police doing their job and disposing of an abuser at home. This is not the police doing their job, making sure that people and kids and, you know, and relationships and women in relationships are safe. No, no, no. This is the fact that if you get caught being a victim in this project, you are homeless. So that's the problem. It's not the police doing their job when they come and they make sure that a woman's not abused, they arrest the guy and they get rid of him. It's the problem, the problem is that now when they tell Brookline Housing that this woman and her children are now safe, they're now homeless. So maybe you could touch on that, because really, to me, that's the problem, is BHA policy.
I'm just, I'm going to step in here for one second, just to say that the $15,000 is not technically a grant. That is a check written out of the Brookline Housing Authority operating budget. Also, I want to say that the format is that, you know, we are here to hear from all of you. And so we're going to keep this as a listening session and not necessarily a conversation back and forth.
At this time, there are 26 attendees, and no one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment. I'd like, looks like someone may have just raised their hand.
Matthew Baroness had his hand up twice. I'm not sure if he changed his mind.
I just saw that.
Hi, this is Matt Baroness, Assistant Director at Brookline Housing Authority. And I just wanted to comment on Janelle's, the Violence Against a Woman Act prohibits evictions based on, you know, someone being a victim of domestic violence. So it, we, you know, it offers, you know, a number of protections for victims of domestic violence. We, you know, we care very much about victims of domestic violence. We would never evict somebody simply for being a victim of domestic violence. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
The next person who'd like to make a public comment is Janelle Ambrose. Janelle, you've been promoted to a panelist, and your time will begin when you unmute.
I just got a message that the post would like me to stay muted. Well, then why invite me? And you don't want to hear me. No problem. Founding gag Diane.
Now you're on.
Well, Bonnie, I'm just, you know, I'm annoyed. I'm really annoyed because I know that to be an absolute full-face lie. I know that to be a lie right now. I'm telling you. Like, the fact that that's the reason why you ain't getting nobody raise their hands. Nobody cut off everybody's hands. Nobody wants to be homeless. Nobody wants to be a target by BHA, okay? But guess what? The luxury accommodations over here, I don't care. I'd rather live with the pigeons. If I didn't need my kid to finish school here, I wouldn't stay here. I would graduate to vagrancy and go downtown and live with the pigeons, where there's no black mold, okay? So where we got, where we don't get brand-new doors and rip outdoors and replace doors that are not broken, when we got plenty of stuff that's broken. Like, that's an annoyance to the people who live here. Are you kidding me? We got people ripping outdoor, no notice, mind you. You live on the fourth floor, you come downstairs, you can't even go outside. You gotta go all the way back up and go down the other side because you didn't even get a notice that they were doing that work. Then they look at you like, you know, you're something that they would scrape off their shoe if they could and keep going. In the meantime, you're replacing doors that ain't broken, and there's stuff that's broken. Like, I don't understand. I don't understand. Maybe it's just my lack of degrees or something. But I know people with plenty of degrees, and they don't understand it either. Like, seriously, black mold is fine, asbestos, lead paint, no problem. Remove it the best you can while the residents are living there, polluting their entire bodies. But are you kidding me? Let's replace doors that aren't even broken. Like, I just don't get that. I don't get that. And why would anybody waste money like that? Rich people, much less people who ain't got nothing.
Janelle, you have 30 seconds.
Well, I don't know what I can say in 30 seconds, but I'm hoping that people are understanding that if it wasn't for the Walk and Talk Program, I wouldn't even want to live here. I'm literally, I'm in my bathroom right now, feeling like it's getting me sick, okay? So it's not the luxury accommodations, it's because my kids can go outside at midnight and they're safe, even though they're Black.
Thank you for sharing.
Not the same in Dorchester.
At this time, there are 28 attendees. No one is using the hand raise feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment, but there is a question in the Q and A directed towards Subcommittee members asking how the report or this Subcommittee plans to reconcile Janelle's lived experience with the housing authority's position, which maybe that's something you can recognize in the report or choose to comment on.
In, just very briefly, in our research, there was questions asked to both BHA and the Brookline Police Department if there were any specific policies on the books about being required to report police incidents to BHA, whether the BHA requires that or the BPD required that. And neither of those things are on the books. That does not mean that that doesn't happen, but there is technically no policy that requires that to happen.
Thank you, Bonnie. At this time, there are 27 attendees, and no one has used the hand raise or Q and A feature to indicate they'd like to make a comment. As previously mentioned, if folks don't feel comfortable giving public comment in a live scenario like this, they are more than welcome to submit written comment for this Subcommittee, as well as the larger Task Force to Reimagine Policing. That written comment can be submitted via email to dfields@brooklinema.gov. The next person signed up for public comment is Anne Greenwald. Anne, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video. When you're ready, your time will begin.
Good morning. Thank you so much for this report. I think it's really important work you're doing. My question is, and maybe I missed this in the report, but is there, was there any outreach to other neighborhoods that are non-BHA to find out if families, for instance, in those neighborhoods felt the need for Walk and Talk-type programs or felt like they would be beneficial in a neighborhood like my neighborhood, which is near Coolidge Corner? I'm just curious if, I can imagine, been talking to some of the parents and some of the families I know in my neighborhood that they might not feel like having a police officer walking up and down their street would be the most beneficial thing for them. So I'm just curious if anybody, if there was any interviewing of people like, that were not in BHA.
Hi, Anne. We haven't reached out specifically to neighborhoods outside of BHA about the Walk and Talk Program specifically, but there's definitely been some reach, reaching out to Brookline residents who potentially would be interested in some of the services that are provided by Walk and Talk officers. And that's an ongoing conversation across the Reimagining Policing Task Force that we're part of in terms of how do we create potentially a model of services and supports community-wide that are only specifically right now being served by the Walk and Talk model within the BHA properties.
Yeah, I guess what I was thinking is just like, I don't know if this is how other people react, but I think a lot of times if you see a police officer on the street, you're sort of bristling and wondering, like, why are they there? And so I can imagine if they're just in your, you know, in your vicinity frequently that you might also be feeling that way. So I'm sort of curious about, you know, sort of that emotional effect, if nothing else, on how people feel, just, you know, does it really contribute to safety or does it contribute to being a little bit on edge?
I think it depends on who you ask, but again, we're thinking about models that could be created in the town outside of the BPD that may offer more services and supports to community-ride residents. And you're right, I mean, I think it's going to differ depending on who you are and what your experience of policing has been in terms of your reaction to those services and supports being offered by police as opposed to community service workers outside of the police force. Thanks for your comment.
At this time, there are 28 attendees, and we're looking for folks to use the hand raise feature or Q and A to indicate they'd like to make a public comment. This can also be a time for Subcommittee members to share part of the process while developing the report, which will perhaps spark some questions for attendees or any particular revelations that you want to pull out of that. And perhaps people can ask questions on that or expand upon.
While we are waiting for anyone to have comments, it would be great to hear from anyone who might have an idea of who we should be having conversations with, you know, not necessarily specific people, but different communities, different organizations. While we have a list of our own, it's always wonderful to hear who we should be hearing from and who should be brought into this, this conversation and centered in the process.
At this time, there are 27 attendees, and we're encouraging folks to use the Q and A or hand raise feature to indicate if they would like to make a comment on the preliminary report of the Walk and Talk Subcommittee from the Task Force to Reimagine Policing. If you're not comfortable making a live comment, you can always email written comment The next person with a public comment is Ryan Black. Ryan, you've been promoted. Thanks.
Oh, I didn't anticipate being on video. Sorry. Yep, just simple question like I put in the chat, just curious about what sort of new services the Subcommittee foresees the town, the BHA creating.
Well, I think this is going to need to come from the community. This needs to be a community-led process. I, you know, we can certainly imagine what those services could be. You know, but I, you know, I very much want that to come directly from people who need services. So I don't, I don't want to prescribe necessarily. people who need services. So I don't, I don't want to prescribe necessarily what those services might be. Yeah. So, you know, when people value things like having access to a police officer or somebody 24/7, there should probably be a service that could take on that role that is not a police officer. You know, if, if your, your child is in trouble, if they take off in the night, you know, or something like that, you, you have somebody that you can call that isn't a police officer. But very much that needs to be led by the community and what they need.
At this time, there are 28 attendees and we'd like to encourage folks to either use the hand raise feature or Q and A to pose a public comment or question to the subcommittee. The next person signed up for public comment is Amy Takonami. You've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable and your time will begin.
Hi, all. Amy, she her hers. Thank you all for, for your hard work on this. I know we're just seeing, right, like the tip of the iceberg in terms of, yeah, all the work and research you've done to get us here. So thank you. I just want to validate some of Janelle's comments about the BHA and police reporting to one another, even though it was clarified that that isn't written in paper anywhere that, right? If that's the experience that we're hearing from folks, we need to address the lived experience. And I just really want to thank her for her courage and ability, like willingness to share that today. And I actually think, again, Janelle has a point regarding discomfort around residents not showing up here today. And those folks being, as we all know, the target of this program and those most impacted. We saw yesterday, I was at the SRO hearing as well, and, you know, no current high school students spoke at that hearing either. And I think that's telling. We're talking about speaking up against folks with guns here. We're talking about, about police. And I think that just should be acknowledged. And I'm hoping that because of the other avenues y'all have opened up for folks to share anonymously via writing, via interviews, that, you know, we shouldn't expect folks to show up. Or, yeah. And finally, I just want to say in terms of the report, I really love the idea and your recommendations to open up how we use the 15K with the residents in mind. Sure, the walk and talk can be part of that conversation, but you know, what if residents really saw that as their money, right? It's there to support them. Where is their voice in determining how that money is used? And y'all brought up topics including housing, jobs program, childcare. I mean, what if all of those things were put out on the table and residents were able to decide where that money was going. And 15K, right, is just the cap that we have now. Like, what would it look like for residents to say like, here are all the things that we need to feel successful in BHA, but also like as a community member in Brookline? So really excited about that being a next step and thank you for all your work.
At this time, there are 28 attendees and we are encouraging folks to use the Q and A or hand raise feature to indicate that they would like to make a public comment. The next person signed up to make a comment is Janelle. You've been promoted and can unmute when you're ready. Your three minutes will begin.
I just wanted to thank Amy for not leaving me out here like a plastic bag in a Walmart parking lot floating around like, you know, I'm just throwing things out there. It's the absolute truth. There's so many people that, you know, would, would benefit from knowing that if they had to call the police, that they would, it wouldn't be contingent on questioning their, their, their residency. Like the police are there for everyone. Supposedly, but not for us. Like, I mean, you better not call them. I mean, come on, doesn't anyone see a problem with that? Like, if I have to call the police, the fact that the police even have time to report whatever happened over here to my landlord. And for my landlord to then, even though we have black mold, even though we have all these other problems over here, for them to actually take the time to come call somebody down there and say, um, so what's going on? Mind your business. Mind your business. I, I, I haven't been convicted of a felony. And from what I remember, from what I, what I, what I read and, and signed and everything else, that that would be a reason for maybe my tendency to be questioned, you know, if I was over here building bombs, running a meth lab. I don't know, something of that nature that would create a police involvement where I would be, you know, locked up for many years in charge of the felony. Okay, yeah, maybe, you know, you could question my tendency. But if I have an argument with my 15 year old and the police come, I shouldn't have to come down there for a meeting. If, in fact, God knows, I can't see it, but let's say I had a boyfriend that beat me up. Let's whip it around because it's more believable that I would beat him up. Let's say I beat him up. Okay. Now he, he can't even call the police on me because he know that me and all my kids are going to be homeless.
You have 30 seconds.
I don't care what Matt Barone says about that. I personally spent three days babysitting three children of a woman who had her leg broken over here, and I didn't even barely know her. Okay, she was evicted within a month. She could barely walk straight when they kicked her out of here over there. And then had the nerve to charge her a bunch of money because maybe she painted or maybe there was something. What do you mean? There's $5,000 worth of damage when you move into this place, minimum.
Janelle, you've reached your three minutes.
Half white and been that way for God knows how long. I've been here a decade. When do I get a, a fresh coat of paint? I've been here a decade. Come on, man. You wonder why people are depressed? You wonder why people, give me a break. First of all, the worst part is for them to actually threaten your tendency and they tell you, we think you got mental disorders. So if you don't get help, you're out of here.
Janelle, you've reached your three minutes. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
The next person signed up for comment is Dan Bresman. Dan, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable and your time will begin.
Hi, I apologize if you answered this before I was able to join. Is the subcommittee proposing immediate termination of walk and talk? Or gradual? Or how does that, what's the proposal vis a vis the establishment of new services?
We are also leaving that process up to the community and what they feel they need. In our findings, we have found that police providing these social services to BHA residents is, you know, there are lots of professionals that can do many pieces of that work better, or because that's their job to do it and they are not also carrying the baggage that a police officer carries. So we are leaving how to make that transition up to community members and the process of community engagement and community organizing is laid out in detail in our subcommittee, the Community Engagement and Envisioning Subcommittee Report, which will be, which will have a hearing tonight. That's the answer to that.
I am about to add our recommendations in the chat and you'll see that we're leaving that open for now based, we're waiting for ongoing discussions with community input as to what that might look like, as Bonnie said.
The next person signed up for public comment is Sam Tarlo. Sam, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your time will begin.
Hello. Good morning. I just wanted to reiterate, I guess, a couple of things that Amy touched on in a showing appreciation and validation for Janelle. In that I would urge us in this time to to not cut her off if she wants to continue sharing things and I would, Janelle, you would like to continue speaking. I want to continue to hear what your lived experience is like and kind of let that guide the session for the time being. Thank you.
The next person indicated interest in public comment is Janelle. You've been promoted to a panelist and you can unmute and share your video when you're comfortable and your time will begin.
I am so humbled by the fact that the gentleman even was concerned in what I was saying. Because I know for an absolute fact that I didn't have three minutes. And I was cut off. But I, I, I'm not really sure why, because the whole point of this is for people to really express what they really experience and what their real feeling is on the situation. So really, I really feel like, and this has been more than one time that the Brookline Police have had interactions with me on that type of scale. I had another resident who just disappeared for three days. And the father was beside himself. He didn't know what to do. He said to me, Janelle, what do I do? And I said, wait a minute, slow down, Chemo Savvy. She's been gone three days. You need to call the police. And his feeling was, well, I don't want DSS to get involved. And I said, listen, if something really truly did happen to her, you certainly don't want to have to explain three days from now why you didn't call six days ago. And so certainly he called the police. And the police come over and they asked, he asked the police, would it be all right if I left the child with Janelle because I have to go to work and the kids with Janelle? And they said, oh, yeah, we know her. She's, she's been there, but she's been in this situation before, actually. So no problem. She's been fingerprinted by, by Brookline, working the school department. She's not going anywhere, no problem. And that's not the only time. So I want you to understand that the police in, in, in these scenarios did what police really, really are designed to do was to serve and protect. They easily could have made a big report about how the mother was missing, called DSS. Why would they do that when the kids weren't in danger? But in other places, DSS would be involved, even though the children were safe, even though the children with their father. But because of the relationship that we have with our police officers living in this project, we were able to really see the, the situation through without a real change to these kids' lives, without their stability being upset. You know, and really it comes down to a point of a, a mother who was in a situation where she was balled up in a fetal position for three days and didn't know if she'd ever go back to her life, but she did. Imagine if she went back to it, it was gone. So all I'm saying is that if you just realize, okay, and, and, and all the, all the extras about them bringing, you know, police all through there and I, once in a while you see them. Once in a while. And when you see them, you're usually happy to. Hey, how's it going, Mike? I remember you. You're not even from over here, but I remember you. Like that's, that's, that's important. And the fact is they would still come through here. They would still do everything they do if walk and talk didn't exist. Because that's who they are. Like no one is going to say that a, a, a lot of the police officers that were raised right here in these projects don't, don't get it. Don't know what it's like when, you know, you gotta drag the bike up four flights, even though you could have left it downstairs because it's safe. Nobody's gonna steal it, but because of Brookline Housing Authority, you know, you know, you have to drag it up. They understand. They, they, they get it. And the people who, who grew up here, who didn't live here, they're real good friends with the people who did, and they get it. So we're talking about a different police department altogether, really. You know? And I just, I just feel like if you guys would just understand that there's so many policies of BHA that don't work. That that's the part that we really need to be adjusting. That's the part that we really need to really take into consideration. No one should be, no one's tenancy should be questioned when their rent is paid and they haven't destroyed the property and they haven't bothered their neighbors or disturbed anybody that, you know, and I, no one's tenancy should be questioned because the police will call up for whatever reason. No one's tenancy should be questioned because they're in a volatile situation and the police had to deal with it. Like that's the police's job. And as citizens, if we can't count on them when they actually will do their job, when do, when do we expect to count on them? I just don't understand. Like if they, if, if we had instances of, of kids being dragged out of here, kicking and screaming, getting nine year olds getting thrown in the back of police cars and be amazed. I mean, listen, I would be on the front lines to just to literally sever any tie they had with our community. But the fact is, that's not the case. Our resource officer in that high school is one of the most unbelievably loving, kind, wonderful. You will not catch her without a smile on her face because even on her bad day, she has a fake one in her pocket. Excuse me. You will not find better people surrounding our kids when it comes down to it. And especially where we live in a, in a, in a community where the minority here is poor. You can be white and be poor. You're the minority here in Brookline. So it's, you know, it's not about black or white. It's about green or not. And when you don't have green, you could easily be working a crappy job and paying an exorbitant amount of money to live and trying to do everything you can to keep your kids safe and educated and push them through life. But, but if you're doing it here, you know that at midnight, you're safe when you come home. If you work in late, if you work in triple shifts. I work overnights and I'm, I'm out all night long like a drug dealer and I am safe. I, I, my kids, even at six, seven years old, they could be downstairs playing kickball at midnight. There's so many floodlights. It looks like noon out there. There's parents out there. There's watchful eyes, caring, watchful eyes beyond the fact that no kid gets punched in the face over here all summer vacation. That doesn't happen anywhere. And I know my three minutes got to be up now, but I just want to thank the gentleman for even considering, listening to what I had to say. I, I value that so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment.
Thank you, Janelle. Thank you, Janelle.
At this time, there are twenty seven attendees. We'd like to encourage folks to use the hand raise or Q and A feature if they'd like to make a comment.
While we are waiting on someone to have a comment, I want to make it clear that our intention here is never, ever to make people feel less safe. It is only to make everybody feel safe.
At this time, we have a new person signed up for public comment. Deborah Brown, you've been promoted to a panelist. Can you share your video when you're comfortable and your time will begin?
Good morning. My, my comment goes more to a question. Is, is there some way that you all can survey tenants who are subjected or who experienced the walk and talk program? I mean, just a brief survey tool that's anonymous? And then is there a way that, and, and, and maybe even figure out a way to break it down by, by, by age group?
I want to make sure you're done before I answer that, Deborah.
I think I'm done. Thank you.
There actually is a survey that went out, not by us, but by the Reform Committee that surveyed BHA residents about their opinions on the walk and talk program. There were only seventy responses, the majority of which were from senior housing. There were not, I think there were six or seven black or people of color that responded. Those details are in our report. So while that did go out, it, it's hard to say that enough response was gathered to be able to make a clear, to get a clear picture of the feeling of the residents of the walk and talk program. It's certainly possible to do something similar again at some point. But I, at this point, I think our, our way forward is community organizing and one-on-one conversations where we can really, really get a feel for what people, you know, people's real experiences and their real wishes for how things should be in, as far as public safety in Brookline Housing.
So most, most, most of the participants were elderly?
Yes. That doesn't mean that that is not important information, but the issues that have come up have not been in that particular demographic. There's, the walk and talk officers also cover senior housing in Brookline Housing Authority. That's why.
Okay, I was just curious.
Thanks, Deborah.
Yep.
The next person who indicated interest in public comment was June Binney. June, you've been promoted. You can unmute and share your video if you're comfortable and your time will begin. Looks like maybe June is having technical difficulties, so I'll give that a minute. This hearing is set to close at ten o'clock and we are giving three minutes per person, which means we'll have about time for maybe one or two more people to give comment. This time, there are twenty six attendees. So if anyone else is interested in making a public comment, please use the hand raise feature or Q and A to do so before this subcommittee wraps their public hearing. Deborah Brown has indicated she'd like to make a comment. Deborah, you have been promoted to a panelist and your time will begin when you're ready.
Yeah, I had another question. What percentage of, of, of people in Brookline have regular interactions with, with law enforcement? So like, some of these kids will see them at school. Some of these, some of these families see them in their housing. I mean, what, what percentage? Has anybody asked that question? Clearly, I haven't read the report, but I was just curious. I'm, I'm curious. And does, has anybody ever looked at what are, what are the cumulative impacts of exposure from multiple sources to law enforcement, in particular, young people?
It's a great question, Deborah. And we don't know at this point. I think it's a complicated question, as I am sure you're aware. And it would be really good information to have. But at this point, we don't have it.
Are there any longitudinal studies out there? That have looked at it?
One, well, one thing, it, this was in our survey, sort of, not exactly, about frequency of contact with the police. A link to that is in our report as well. So the Reform Committee had a survey about walk and talk specifically. And our task force put out a larger survey to twenty five thousand people in Brookline. And that was one of the questions. There are quite a few questions on there that might be able to approximate what you're asking.
As far as, there is no longitudinal study in Brookline at this time. It would be great to have.
Well, I even mean Brookline and beyond, so that at, at a minimum, you, by analogy, maybe there's a way that you can extrapolate some things. That would be germane to what's going on here.
Yep, it's a good point. Thank you for raising it.
There does appear to be one question in the Q and A that's disappeared.
I'm sorry, Devin. I, I, it just hit me in a way. The question was, if the police is, if people support the police or like the police or support the police, how could it be a negative experience? And I, my comment was, if one person has a negative experience with the police, then it's a problem because that one person is a part of the community.
Thank you, Kimberly. At this time, I think the subcommittee would like to close the public hearing and wrap up with some final comments.
Please go ahead, Raul. I'm not sure I have any final comments besides thanking people for participating and coming to listen and reading the report. Please send further feedback to us via the email that has been provided and can probably be put in the chat one more time. Because we want to hear from you. Our work is not done here. There will be many, many conversations. The work does not end with this report. So please, please, please reach out.
Hey, everybody, I'm Raul Fernandez, Select Board Member and Chair of the Task Force to Imagine Policing in Brookline. This is one of our subcommittees. I wanted to, to listen in, to, to hear what folks had to say and to see the presentation from the subcommittee. You know, I think what, what you've heard here today has really put into sharp focus the challenges of, 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 of groups like this, of the, of the government of Brookline, of BHA, really truly understanding what the experience of residents actually is, particularly those residents who live in public housing. You know, what I, what I hear is, is that there's a lot of fear out there, fear of people losing their standing in the community, literally losing their housing because of speaking up about issues that are impacting them. And then also mistrust, you know, mistrust of, of various forms of authority. And those are, those are, those are deeper issues that we, that we need to address. You know, policing, things like the walk and talk program, even at their absolute best, are addressing the symptoms of problems. What we need to start to invest our dollars in is addressing the root cause of problems. And we need to not just invest dollars in there, but our efforts and our energy and our time in addressing those issues. And I, and I think, I think that's something that really needs to show in the final report, not just of the subcommittee, but of the task force, that this isn't just about what we should or shouldn't do with any individual program out there, but our, our real, like, putting our entire effort, putting our heart and soul into community engagement. But again, not just addressing symptoms of problems, but the problems themselves, the root causes of those issues. And so I'd, I'd love to see all that reflected. The other last thing I wanted to say is, you know, these folks that you see here, they're all volunteers, residents. You know, they're, they bring their unique expertise to this space as well as their own lived experiences as folks who, who've lived in Brookline, raised kids in Brookline, you name it. And so I just want to just thank you all for all the work that you've done. I know it has not been easy. And, and, and for folks that have watched our, our Friday morning meetings, we meet every Friday, the entire task force from eight to ten AM, including this Friday, and welcome you to join us. You know, the, the emotional toll has been evident on members of the task force and, and probably nowhere more than this particular group that's been, that's been really do, you know, fighting some real, real challenges to be able to bring to you the presentation that they had and, and that they're going to be working on over, over the next coming weeks. Last thing I want to just say is that there are more public hearings coming. There's one tonight, as Bonnie mentioned, from the Community Envisioning and Community Engagement Subcommittee. That's at six thirty tonight. There's one tomorrow night. There's a group called Vulnerable People and People in Crisis Subcommittee. That's at six PM tomorrow. And as I mentioned, our regular task force meetings will continue on Friday mornings from eight AM to ten AM. We also have a, the full task force will present its preliminary report, our draft report, on Wednesday, February seventeenth at seven PM. We invite you to be there as well. Oh, I'm sorry, tonight's hearing is at seven thirty, not six thirty. That's my fault. What I was gonna say at the end of this, so, so I'll just, I'll finish that part and then I'll say, I'll say that what I was gonna say at the end is that, um, the, the, our, that preliminary report will be delivered, you know, and have a public hearing on Wednesday, February seventeenth at seven PM. And then we're expecting to deliver our final report to the Select Board on Tuesday, March second. And that's also going to be a public meeting, obviously. Although I'm not sure if the chair is gonna make that a, a hearing or the Select Board's gonna schedule a hearing at a later date. In any case, all of these hearings are available on the Brookline calendar. So if you go to the BrooklineMA.gov website and click on calendar, you can find all of these hearings there. And, and so please, you know, we'd love for you to, to see, to read the reports that are, that are online and that have been, you know, shared in the chat. And, and to participate, to share your voice. And as Devin mentioned, if you, if you, if you either don't feel comfortable sharing in this venue or simply aren't able to make one of those meetings, you can always email Devin@dfields@brooklineMA.gov. That's D F I E L D S at BrooklineMA.gov. So that's it. I just want to say thank you also just to all the, the folks that have been doing this work for, going on six months now. Me, literally meeting every week, multiple times a week to bring, you know, what you're seeing today. So thank you.
Thanks, Raul. Thanks again to everybody who's coming, who has come to, to listen to us and, and make comments. We appreciate you. And to all the BHA administrators, police officers and town employees that have also helped us to do this research and come to our conclusions. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.